Everyone ready? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, July 9th, 2024. The time is 5:30 PM. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Motley, Freedleeb.
Here.
Allison is absent. Beyondich.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Aaron Zelli.
Here.
Cuffy.
Present. Would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Hello, hello? None of them are working?
No.
He's working.
Hello, hello.
Testing, testing.
Bill? Is there a reset? Is there a reset there somewhere?
Let's do a test. Does any one's microphone work?
Testing, no.
No, no.
Nope. Oh, really?
Chris? You can hear me?
You can hear me. Testing, testing. Okay, well, we'll go from that. Okay, thank you. We'll go to item four on the agenda, which is a public forum. This is an opportunity for anyone from the general public to address the council this evening. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to address the council this evening? Please come forward, turn the light on to green, and please state your name for the record, and welcome to the city council meeting.
Hi, I'm Drianna Bixby. So, good evening, council. Thank you for having me. I have a couple of things I would like to mention, if I may please, regarding a local problem and a local event. First, I would like to address the graffiti issue on the south side of town this year. We've lived here for a few years now, and we haven't seen as much park graffiti on the south side as we have this year. Some of it has been cleaned up, arguably the worst of it, but I would like to state that there is some graffiti still at the park. It's mostly on the inside of slides where the children can see it, but not the city workers or parents. Regrettably, there's also a lot of disgusting graffiti under the Highway 53 Bridge over Sixth Avenue. I'm sure we're not the only residents who travel under this bridge to access Super One, but my family and I would be most pleased to find out how we can clean this up. Thank you for hearing me out on that. And then, the second thing I would like to mention today is that I have abruptly noticed a tremendous lack of information going out to the public about our city's education options. There are so many wonderful programs available to residents, and I would like to help them find the resources that they need. Whether or not parents have heard about the horrific incidents regarding a local school district this year, I know how intimidating and challenging it is to begin homeschooling without guidance. I started homeschooling my wonderful children just a couple of years ago, and I am pleased to say that I have enough experience now that I believe I can actually help others. Therefore, I and another homeschooling parent have arranged to host an event on July 13th, weather permitting, and again on August 10th at Alcott Park to provide crucial information that can help parents, grandparents, and guardians make better informed decisions about their children's education going forward. We will have educational materials to browse, pricing information, information regarding Minnesota's homeschool laws, a list of some of the benefits of homeschooling, and some of the reasons why one may consider it as a better alternative for their family. There are many wonderful alternatives to government-funded schools, and they vary in price, online or offline, and secular or non-secular. All children are required to take nationally recognized standardized tests in Minnesota as well, and not only can I provide testing resources, but I can attest to the success of my own children. Just this year, two of my children scored at a college level, two of them have achieved the highest score on the distribution scale, and one of my littlest ones has achieved an eighth-grade equivalency in two portions. Homeschooling can be done while you're at home or work with textbooks and online options, and it really doesn't have to be intimidating. Anyone who would like more information can join myself and another parent on July 13th and August 10th from 1:00 to 4:00 PM in the pop-up tent at Alcott Park. Thank you again so much for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to item five on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion.
Sorry.
Come on up. Please state your name for the record, and welcome to the council meeting.
My name is Lee Gorisho. I'd just like to bring our attention to the recent storm that we had, and I know we're seeking money for infrastructure. I'd like to voice my concern about my street, and I'm hoping, I'm kind of demanding that I'm part of that infrastructure improvement to my sewer line. For years, it's been neglected. The city's been checking it weekly. They've known about it for years. I hope I'm making my case for the infrastructure money, and if we do get some because of the storm, I'm hoping my street and my sewer line is reusing this money. Two, the East Two Rivers, I guess that's what they call it on the map, Lake that runs behind the event center and out to Highway 53, hoping that's including infrastructure money for flooding. I have no clue of where that river or how the flow comes out on the other side of 53 or where it goes after that. It must be just a small ditch or something, but that needs to be addressed too, hopefully by the DNR or someone to address this problem of getting flow through that river, through 53 somehow, or on, what is it, West Virginia or whatever other side of the railroad tracks over there, addressed. This could be a major problem down the thing. Hopefully, this can be addressed with monies that we're seeking for flooding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorisho. I know our Public Works Department is working diligently on that, doing some ditching and trying to clear that out, to clear the way for that. There have been ongoing efforts for the last year or so, and they continue to do so to try to alleviate that very issue they have, at least an issue number two that you had as well. And there's a GIS program that our Public Works Department is putting underway, mapping everything out with the sewer and the water lines, everything are, and so using whatever priorities that we have, what money becomes available, we're going to do our very best to try to improve infrastructure that we have and by identifying them on a priority level. Mr. Gorisho.
Mayor, I just want to address that point. I think that dredging and ditching project is bigger than the public works, to what they can handle right there and their timely manner of, my view is a foot a day. I don't know. It drove past there a couple times. I don't see anybody working, but thank you, councilors, for hearing my concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Gorisho. Okay, I was remiss. So, is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening? Seeing none, we'll move to item five, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a councillor or a citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval corrections of the minutes of the June 25th to 2012 council meeting and the June 20th, 2024 emergency meeting. Item 5.2 is adoption of Finance Resolution Number 24-013, the schedule of bills. Item 5.3 is approved pay estimate one for the 2023 street improvements, Sixth Avenue West and Seventeenth Street to Musabe Batumines in the amount of $377,114.73. Item 5.4, approved pay estimate number two for the 2023 street improvement for Tenth Avenue West and Thirteenth Street South to Casper Construction in the amount of $288,218.30. Item 5.5 is approved the one-day temporary liquor license for the following. The IVOE Local 49 for an August 4th, 2024 event on Alcott Park. Item 5.5B, Alcott Park Brew Fest, scheduled for August 17th, 2024. Item 5.6 is approved the following travel requests. Tyler Rooney, police officer, to attend the Ballistics Defense Course, October 7th through 8th, 2024, in Redwood Falls, Minnesota, at a cost of $794. Item 5.6B, Nicholas Grivna, K-9 officer, to attend the Reed Technique of Interviewing Interrogation at a cost of $450. Item 5.7, approved the transient merchant license for OTH Northeast LLC, doing business as On the Hook Fish and Chips. Item 5.8, approved pay estimate number two for the Public Safety Building to Kraus Anderson in the amount of $412,911.29. These are the consent agenda items before the council this evening, looking for council action.
I will move the consent agenda.
Council Johnson moves to approve the consent agenda. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Motley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item six, appearances. There is no one scheduled to appear before the council meeting this evening. Move item seven, 7.1, the clinic lease. Clint, do you have any other updates with respect to the clinic lease?
Mayor, I've talked to Brian Lindsey, and apparently the latest thing is he is in touch, he's getting in touch with Bond Council to address some of the questions that Essentia Health had regarding the bond and some questions he himself had, so they're working through those issues through Bond Council, and then they'll continue going back and forth regarding the lease.
Okay, thank you, and I did get a call from Sam Stone, the CFO, CEO there of Essentia Health, and he wants to establish a meeting with the city, particularly moving forward with that as well, so I told him he's going to reach out to me. We were supposed to have been told so yesterday, but he'll be reaching out, and we'll move forward with this, so thank you for that update.
Would you like Mr. Lindsey to put that on his list?
Yes, would you please? Yeah, when he calls me, I'll refer Mr. Stone to Britt for scheduling a meeting. Thank you very much. Any other questions or concerns regarding the clinic lease? Seeing none, we'll move to item eight, discussion items. Item 8.1, the planning and zoning meeting that was held on July 8th, 2024. Item 8.1A and A subdivision A and B, to consider a variance request from Catherine Sadness at 8:30, 13th Street North in the city of Virginia, to allow a new 26-foot-by-28-foot replacement garage at three feet from the south property line alley setback where five feet is required, and to allow a new 26-foot-by-28-foot replacement garage at two feet from the east side yard setback where five feet is required. These are recommended to be approved by planning and zoning, looking for council action.
So moved.
Council Motley moves to approve. Is there support?
Support.
By Council Beyondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 8.1B and subdivision A and B, to consider a variance request for Yasniel Ojeda Santiago at 1530 11th Street South in the city of Virginia. A, to allow a fence height of four feet where three feet is allowed in the front yard, and to allow a deck, four feet side yard setback where five feet is required. Moved to approve by Council Beyondich. Is there support?
Support.
By Council Freedleeb. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Move to item nine, committee reports. 9.1, there was no committee the whole held last Tuesday, so we'll look for any other council or department head that may have a committee report they'd like to disseminate today. Jenny, Jenny Bubine from our planning department. Jenny?
Thank you, Mayor. I do just want to update everyone. We did have that Planning and Zoning Commission meeting last night. It was held a week later due to some holiday conflicts, so thank you for the quick turnaround on getting that on the agenda tonight for approval that'll help those property owners. I did want to also mention that we, as a planning commission, did discuss a couple other items. One, potentially amending the zoning ordinance to allow a fence height of four feet where currently ordinance only allows three. It's been a routine variance request and routine approval, so we feel that making that amendment is a needed thing within the zoning ordinance, so we will be working on that language to move it forward sooner rather than later, just so that we don't have to have residents coming in for a variance that's routinely approved. Additionally, we talked about the cannabis moratorium and potential future zone district and ordinance amendments pertaining to that. More work will be forthcoming on that, but we are starting that conversation sooner, again, rather than later, just to get the ball rolling, so we will provide more information as it's available on that.
Thank you, Jenny. Any other council reports or committee reports from anyone? Okay, thank you. Move to item 10, Commission Liaison Reports. Is there any report from the council on a commission liaison? Council Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. The Human Rights Commission met last Monday night here in the committee room at 6:00 PM, I believe it was. We are still looking for some more commissioners. We need two more commissioners from the community that are willing to serve. One of the items that we will be working on is creating a charter for the commission as well as some guidance as to the direction we want, they want to head, we want to head in, how they can best serve the community. They are also going to be a sponsor of the, as they have been with many community events, of Range Iron Pride this year. That was a unanimous vote, so they'll be providing some volunteer and in-kind services for that. Other than that, the airport commission did meet today. We are still active. We are in search of a manager, fixed base operator, and a few other things, so if anybody's interested in, knows somebody who would want to run an airport, they can contact Evlith Virginia Airport, and I can't remember her email, but they can give Public Works a call, and Chris can direct them properly from there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Johnson. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move to department reports. Once again, we'll go to our department heads. Any reports you'd like to be given today? Britt, anything from legal today?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Pam, any announcements? Cherry from finance? And Jenny, anything further? Okay, thank you. Okay, I just have a couple of quick questions and moving forward. Come on forward here. Thank you. We have Jody Gravenoski, our library director. I didn't see you sitting back there. I apologize for that, so Jody, from our library director, please, welcome.
Hi, so just want to update people on some events. We already had one today, so if you have not seen the Kids for Kids concert, they do have more throughout the month of July, but they were wonderful this morning. If you have littles, we have a tadpole parade, hopefully outside. Looks like the weather's going to be permitting for that on Thursday afternoon at 2:00, and if you want to come check out some falcons, we will have those in the event room at 10:30 on Friday. And then, if you're looking for some good books to read, stop by the library between 10:30 and 11:30, chat with some other patrons, chat with Sophia, see if you can get some good ideas. And then, starting next week, we are doing the Mystery Mansion Escape Room. We have easy and we have hard. Please call the library to find a time that works for your group. It can be up to six people. We recommend at least two people. The event room will be transformed again. We had another, so far, I think we've got five or six spaces that have been booked, but we are doing this one for six days, so give us a call at 218-748-7525 to make your reservations. And then, everybody's favorite, we have llamas coming soon. They're going to be on the 30th of July, so they are going to come visit us, and then we are going to end the month with watercolors, so at 2:30 in the library event room. All of this is online in our catalog, or if you stop by the library, you can pick up our monthly catalog, our monthly calendar.
Thank you, Jody, very much. Okay, any other commission liaison or department head reports? I have a couple of questions and some updates on many of the issues with respect to our emergency management system and how this is going with, through the state, local, and federal government with respect to the storm damage process, so I'll be getting to that momentarily. First, Britt, I've been getting a lot of calls, and maybe your council has, the floating bridge, any idea when that might be coming to fruition?
They have constructed, they constructed the panels, now it just needs to be installed.
Okay, so, and as you indicated, installing usually just takes a couple of days, so we hope to have it installed within the next few weeks? Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, and as you all are aware, just as a reminder, the city of Virginia issued a cannabis dispensary moratorium for one year, beginning July 17th of this year, or was it June 17th? July 17th of this year, I see that'll take effect. Just to let you know, just a reminder, that dated July 3rd, the St. Louis County sent a letter to all the townships and city officials within St. Louis County that the county Liquor License Committee voted unanimously to recommend that the St. Louis County Board enact a countywide, a countywide moratorium prohibiting registration and operation of any cannabis business through December 31st of this year pursuant to Minnesota's statute 342-13E, 2024, and 145-8.05 in 2023. And there's a list of some of the issues and the reasons for that. I won't go into that, but there is a moratorium, it's countywide, that was passed by the county board. Okay. So, just quickly, an update on, there's been a lot of misinformation about what's going on in the city, what's happening with our storm assessment damage and those kind of things, so other than all the other information that's already disseminated, there's been a lot about how this process being formed. I just want to let you know that our staff, myself and other councilors as well, have been involved, that we've spoken to a variety of our legislators. Many of the residents have reached out to the legislators. They have called me to provide some additional information as well, and other councilors have also had some contact at the local, state, or even the federal level. Now, we have a lobbyist we employ on a monthly basis, Jerick and Associates, who's been working the phones, talking to different various entities, getting some information moving forward to try to get the ball rolling and get some clarification. Now, Mike Jerick, our lobbyist, touched base with a number of congressmen, Congressman Tom Emmer, and Tom Emmer has reached out to the governor and to the federal government with respect to FEMA relief. Commissioner Jacobson from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety reached out after we spoke with Governor Walz and his chief of staff, Pat Tanis, and then he sent Commissioner Jacobson to give us a call. Britt and I had a little conversation with Mr. Jacobson about moving forward and what the process was, and there's an open door. He explained that there has been some inquiries at the national level through the governor's office in order to try to facilitate some type of movement to get to the place where FEMA would be able to respond, not only to the infrastructure parts, but to businesses and residents as well, which is a long, arduous process moving forward. There are lots of information that has to be disseminated by the local officials, which we have, to St. Louis County, and they compile these statistical data, send it to the governor's office, and they in turn send that to the federal level, seeking assistance for not only businesses and our infrastructure and our recovery of some of the expenses we incurred as a result of that, this is from the storm, but also for potentially, potentially for residents, so please bear with me as I move this thing. So, this is from the offices of Governor Walz and Lieutenant Governor Peggy Flanneman. Dear Mr. President, under the provisions of the section of the Robert E. Safran Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act, I request you to declare a disaster for both public assistance and individual assistance for the state of Minnesota. Starting in May and continuing through today, Minnesota has experienced extreme weather patterns, including historic rains across the state, multiple tornadoes and hailstorms. There were three distinctive time periods during which the portion of this state experienced significant damage. Those three incidents will result in a disaster declaration as supported by the details and evidence that has been presented and are currently being presented at the local, county, state level. And so, he lists out many of the disaster areas throughout the state of Minnesota. Additionally, the cumulative amount of these estimates show that the state will exceed our threshold, our threshold of $10,499,948.86, which triggers FEMA response. Some of the economic impacts we are experiencing include a significant impact on tourism due to damage, enclosures of department and natural resources, parks and trails. The impact will be a big blow to summer tourism, and we begin as the early fourths of our holidays begin. All 42 counties have experienced individual assistance impact. Forty-two counties have experienced individual assistance impact. Validation of damages to homes with basements is currently being conducted with supporting information by the American Medical Corps, the National Guard, and the Civil Air Patrol in conjunction with all the other entities. In some areas, shelters have been established and are operating across the affected areas to support evacuation and displaced residents. Fortunately, there have been no deaths or injuries reported. Unfortunately, local government resources are not sufficient to address the threats posed by flooding and the recovery needs that will be coming. Several counties have declared local emergencies and have activated their emergency operation plan, including the city of Virginia. On June 22nd, 2024, Governor Walz declared a peacetime emergency for the state of Minnesota by Emergency Executive Order 24-05. This has allowed for additional state resources to help in response and recovery. The governor has also activated the state's Emergency Operations Center, which is coordinating with state agencies, the National Guard, and the local impacted committees, including Virginia and many others across this county, and FEMA. All state agency resources are available to meet the needs of the emergency and are fully committed to the extent necessary. The potential small business assistance, individual assistance, and support for farmers on top of the public infrastructure assistance that comes with a federal disaster is what Minnesota needs right now. A disaster declaration will help Minnesota expedite in its recovery. It will give confidence to Minnesota citizens, local and state officials, and the federal government will help Minnesota respond and recover from this disaster as it has in the past. I ask for your consideration of this request. I designate Kristin Rogwell, Director of Homeland Security Emergency Management, as the governor's authorized representative for this request. She and her team will continue to work with FEMA and may provide further information or justification on my behalf. Sincerely, Tim Walz, Governor. I received this letter, which is a fact sheet for public assistance fiscal year 2024, from FEMA. This is to notify your offices that FEMA, in coordination with the state and local agencies, will begin preliminary assessment damage to support governor's request for individual assistance, beginning on July 9th, 2024. We anticipate beginning in Jackson County on Tuesday, Cottonwood and Wadawan Counties on Wednesday, and additional counties will be added moving forward, so please be patient. While specific details of these assessments are being finalized, we want to, we want to provide you with additional information about the assessment process. Residents and businesses are encouraged to continue to report their damages to local officials through the city of Virginia, through our website, through our Facebook page, and we in turn will report that to the county. As the damage assessment teams may not visit every home or property with damage, they won't come to every home, they may not come to every home, but this information- won't come to every home, they may not come to every home, but this information that we collect and submit will be very helpful as they assess each and every resident who has filed a report to us. Reported damage will be used in this assessment process. Do not wait to begin the recovery process if safe and available. Document damage and expenses with photographs and by keeping receipts. Contact your insurance company to begin the claims process, even though they may not have a claim, at least show that you did make an effort. Damage assessment teams will include representatives from FEMA, the state, and will be escorted by local officials, our, our emergency operations team. Teams will wear official clothing and carry official identification to ensure there are no scammers out there. Our team will ask, will not ask for any payment of any kind, nor will we ask any personal identifying information such as name, social security number. But we will ask for such information as to whether you own or rent a place, and whether you have insurance, and whether your insurance is covered. Determinations about the eligibility for disaster assistance or declaration are not made during the assessment process. I repeat, they are not made during the assessment process. Not speaking to a assessment team will not prevent disaster assistance later on. So if they don't come to your house, it doesn't mean that you're not going to get the disaster. They'll work with the information that we've provided. So if you have not visited our website, if you have not provided information and you deem that's appropriate, you should do so. We will continue to forward this information to the county, in turn it goes to the state, and all that statistical data will be compiled. But this is, the assessment process comes from FEMA, and I want to thank our lobbyist, Mike Jerick and his staff, and Congressman Emmer's office for moving this forward and getting some clarification for all of us. So I hope that clarifies a little bit for those residents who are out there who are concerned about getting FEMA assistance or whatever that case may be. We don't know what that's going to be. We do know that they're assessing now. The declaration has been made. We're at the FEMA stage where they're investigating, assessing, starting with the southern Minnesota, and moving forward to the areas where have the most need at this point in time. But they'll eventually get here. So please, let's be patient when we move forward with that. So, once again, if anybody has any questions or comments or concerns, please don't hesitate to reach out to us, visit our website moving forward. You can reach out to any city councilor, our staff, or me, and we'll try to clarify things for you. So I may have some additional information, but I'll hold that in advance until we go to the city council. Council Biondich.
Thank you. Is there any way that document could be emailed to us or made out to the public, so if they do ask questions, we have correct information for them?
Yes, and I apologize for that. I just received it.
Okay.
So I'll make sure that I give this to Pam and have it disseminated to all of you and put it in our website and make sure that the public has an opportunity to have this document.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Council Biondich. Okay, I hope that has some little clarity there moving forward. It is a cumbersome process. FEMA always responds at the federal level from the request from the state chief operating officer or whatever, which was Governor Walz. And so we're at that stage right now, where FEMA is now visiting Minnesota, and this is region five. There's different regions. We are in region five, and it's not just the state of Minnesota that's experiencing. There are stations within this region. So just be patient moving forward. There's not a telephone number at this point in time to call, but more information will be forthcoming to all of you, and when we get that information, we'll make sure that we get that disseminated to all of you. So, thank you, everybody, for your patience and understanding during this difficult time. Once again, the city is really, you know, we are, we have our thumb on the pulse of things, we're trying to do everything we can to help you. We understand it's been devastating to all of you. There's been anger and frustration, and there's been understanding, and there's been despair. And we're going to do everything we can to help try to alleviate that, through communication, through assistance, volunteer programs. Britt Cross was up here last week. There's a variety of things, resources that will come together, and as the information that comes forward, as we get some factual, a factual basis for that, not the Facebook posts of this or that, the factual basis, we will surely disseminate that to all of you through a variety of publications and resources and through the city council as well. So thank you, everybody. Does anybody have any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any council reports this evening? Council Johnson?
Mayor, I just want to give a couple of quick shout-outs to some of the amazing stuff that's been happening in the city over the last several weeks. The Iron Trail Motors Event Center was host to FanCon last weekend. It was a two-day event that brought people from far as away as Canada and the western United States. It was very well attended, a great, great opportunity to meet people and see some really cool stuff. I really want to thank Public Works and everybody else in town, our employees who have been working diligently on flood recovery, on keeping stuff, the city moving along forward, as well as cleaning up from the flood. They've been out there working tirelessly, and I just think that they deserve a really big shout-out for continuing to work. And finally, the Fourth of July event at the park was amazing. We got there about 5:30 and got a great spot. The first artist was amazing, a young gentleman who is just, seems to be just starting out in music. The city band, awesome as always, very well done, and then the Iron Range funk machine played for two-plus hours before the fireworks. And the park looked amazing, the staff were great, we only had one food truck, but they were all, everybody else was recovering for the nights before, so just can't say enough about how hard the city staff are working and how amazing they're doing on balancing not only their day-to-day jobs, but all the extra stuff that this council tasks them with, especially in the last few weeks. So, just want to say thank you to them, and if you see our folks out working, say hi, thank them, because they really do deserve the credit that they have been, some of them sacrificing personal time and vacation to help us out. So, thanks a lot, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Council Johnson. Council Motley?
Um, I just wanted to remind the public that there is Virginia's first-ever half marathon happening August 17th, and you can visit the website, irontrail, or excuse me, ironrangehalfmarathon.com if you're still interested in signing up. And also, I do believe they are still looking for a few more volunteers. So, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Council Motley. So, just one more comment before, and I would just echo what Council Johnson indicated, the city band, which is a very, very important part of our summer concert series and some of the amenities we provide to the City of Virginia. I know we had a budget discussions about that. The city band was allocated the funding once again this year, and from my perspective, I think from all of us, this is a, this is a great investment. They did a phenomenal job in all their concerts, particularly the July 4th concert where they had all the marches and the bands, and the honor guard was there, and they were packed there. There were people from all over. There's a gentleman by the name of Bob Scheible that comes every single year, specifically to come to this band concert. And after every concert, he comes up and thanks everybody, our honor guard, everybody, for having such a wonderful concert. And an email from Mr. Bernstein, who lives out of California, says, "You cannot cut this city band. This is the bread and butter of the City of Virginia's summer events," and he's absolutely right. They were phenomenal. So, thank you for that. Okay. Anything else to come before the council this evening? Anybody? So, thank you very much, Mr. Gorsh. We'll lay your concerns to our parking, our city workers and to try to get you an answer moving forward, so we'll have somebody contact you. So we will know all other business that come before the council today. We will adjourn to our next council meeting, which is scheduled for Friday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, July 23rd, 2025, 24, in the council chambers here at 5:30. So, thank you, we stand adjourned.